Attention please. 6:00 PM meeting on February 2nd. Proposed 3.50% water rate increase as proposed by the committee.
It was recommended, but I would like to give explanation.
Okay. You have presentation?
Yes, I do. We don't have any of our customers here, but since we're being televised, we want to be able to present why we're doing this rate increase. Again, proposed is a 3.5% increase to be spent on infrastructure projects. Looking at reserves for future, to reduce future rate increases. This is still part of our infrastructure program and also because we are still seeing reductions in revenues. Explain a little more as we go along. But I do want to mention that there is no increase to our operations and maintenance budget. We had a number of savings this year on insurance. We insulated our buildings. We got a considerable savings on gas and electric costs. Changing vendors for banking services saved us quite a bit. And we get contract changes in overtime that we also see a savings this year. That does offset other creases, increases such as the proposed progress water rate increase, contractual salary increases, increases in other insurances and other operational expenses. So this year is zero increase in O and N budget. But I do want to emphasize that we are continuing to improve our operations and maintenance programs. We are still improving our valve operation and maintenance programs, our hydrant program. And of course, doing our routine work with such as water main repairs, looking for leaks. We have a pretty good leak detection program now where we feel the system's pretty tight. So when it comes down to it, the average residential cost increase with a 3.5% rate increase will become about 36 cents per week. But all of our rate increases are based on our strategic plan. And our basic mission is to provide the highest quality water that we can. And that's to protect the public health. But we want to go beyond that and be a model of water utility. We focus on our customers, again, water quality, system reliability and efficiency. To provide reliable, high-quality water, we have to look for an alternate supply for an emergency. We're totally dependent on Providence water. That's one of our major tasks. Replacing and cleaning and lining our cast iron mains, so discuss that a little bit more. Eliminating low-pressure zones and improving flows actually improves water quality. Prevents contamination of the system. And trying to minimize shutdowns, again, to eliminate any possible contaminants getting into the system. Part of that is installing valves so we can shorten areas that might get shut down in emergency and tying in dead ends to provide more flow and better water quality. So in our capital plans, we have two 10- and 20-year capital plans and we do provide for supply. First of all, Phase 1 to East Providence Tank, which will give us about 5 to 6 million gallons a day, a full backup, but again, from Providence. And we are planning to fully fund that water main project. I do have Phase 2 in the budget as well, which includes 50% of the funding for the full Pawtucket Pipeline going from East Providence to Pawtucket. We are still working with East Providence and with the state and hopefully we'll be able to get some funding from those agencies. The first phase is connecting this, essentially the two pipelines that go across the bay. East Providence's and Bristol County's. Right now, East Providence has a pump station they can pump from our main, but we have no backup supply to get water from East Providence. We recently installed a connection here to the East Providence 16-inch main, which will get us some supply, about 2 million gallons a day. But by putting in this pipeline, which is the first phase of going to Pawtucket, will actually allow us to get about 5 million gallons a day. We average about 3.4. And again, the full Pawtucket Pipeline will include East Providence. I believe they still understand the fact that this is their secure supply as well. They have older water mains crossing the bay. They are at fairly high risk and at some point, they realize that they cannot supply their system without, if those pipelines should be out of service. And just a little reminder as to why we can't use Swansea as, or rather, our Swansea reservoir supplier, Kikamewit and Anawan supplies. This is the Kikamewit in the summertime. It was listed as very poor water quality and not suitable for drinking water by the D E M. So included also in our capital projects is distribution work. We're looking to extend the high-pressure zone. Again, this is to maintain the water quality in our areas where they are experiencing lower pressures than the rest of the system because they are located in high elevation areas. But the major part of our 20-year plan is right here, water main renovation projects. We're talking right now about $1.3 million a mile to renovate or replace a water main. We're looking, we have 233 miles of water main. Right now, the 20-year capital plan is looking at 45 miles of water main renovation projects over the next 20 years. That will give us 19% of our total water mains.
Can I add a question?
Sure.
So your expected lifetime of pipes is 100 years. If you're doing approximately 20% in 20 years, then you extrapolate the numbers. It means you're turning the pipes over in 100 years. Is that the logic?
Well, right now, it's, we're trying to do as much as we can in the next 20 years because we have about 100 miles that should have been done already. So over the long, and what I'm trying to point out here is the fact that this is not going away.
Oh, I know.
This is going to be a continued program. It's not going to be done in 20 years. It's going to be done in 100 years and when we start over again.
That's the question. Yes.
So, and this is a big chunk of...
And it's been neglected.
And it's been neglected, yes.
No, I'm not arguing with the assessment.
As with most systems.
But is 100 years a reasonable lifespan for pipes?
Yes.
That's my question.
Yes, it is.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Pam, on the water main renovation, right? Which you said is a big part of the 3.5% increase, money's generated from that is going to be...
The overall projects, yes. One side even going into the future, the overall 20-year capital plan.
3.5 would generate approximately, how much money?
420,000.
Yeah.
Just 400?
420,000.
Approximately 30,000 per the quarter.
Okay.
420,000. Now, if you take, if you take that 420,000 and earmark X amount of that for the water main renovations since it's a number one priority? Or you just throw up one big pile and use it as the...
Well, it's, it's part of the overall budget, but I'll show a little more of that as we go on.
Because it would seem that, if that's what the main focus of our capital project going out for 20 years, it would seem that you would put, in my opinion, you would put that in a lineup for renovation. There can't be gotten to by a new administration saying, "Well, there's a bunch of money there. Let's take it and make some widgets with it or something." While we make a decision to use that for our number one priority of water main renovation. So I, you know, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud here that it's...
I'd like, I'd like to add one thing, that some of the recent increases because of revenue going down and people using less water, we don't net out that 400.
Okay.
We wouldn't net out the 400,000 in a perfect world if everybody uses the same amount of water.
That's what the number represents.
But I think from the rate increase we had a few years ago, 3 and 1/4, we only netted out about 1.5% increase in revenue after you, after you take the, where the use goes down. You notice in the budget this year, the results this year from the very dry summer, we're not anticipating to have another dry one. We can't anticipate that.
You see my point where I'm saying about if it's Paramount renovating the water mains? And then you just, you know, the comment was made, it's been, we haven't done that lately. You know, I've been on this board for a few years and maybe it's time we should just look at rate increases and whatever that amount turns out to be is to put a certain amount of money generated by that rate increase to the most important thing that we have to accomplish in the next 20 years, which is the emergency connect, interconnect, I mean, the... Yeah, the main request.
Well, what we are actually doing is we've set up an infrastructure fund, a cash fund versus the bond fund. And we're using that as a restricted account to fund, and we have the 20-year plan. I'll show that in a minute too, is how we fund the infrastructure fund. We put certain amount of money every year aside for that, and I'll show you how that...
Am I not making any sense at all about my concern about making that, the money generated from the rate increase? If it's going into capital projects, why can't, why can't we just say a certain percent of what's generated, put for, you know, our mains?
Can I sum it up and maybe you can tell me if this is where you're going with it?
Yeah.
You want to have whatever money we have in increases itemized to a specific purpose so that it doesn't get misappropriated by another administration for another reason?
Based on, based on what we, the presentation's playing, we know what's, what has to be done.
Those are, those are two different schools. One is that you can use the money as needed as situations change, which they do. The other is your intention to compel any future group to use the money as was intended, but I don't think we have a mechanism for that. I don't know which one, which one is better, but just, just...
Well, I think, if I hear what Pam, so typically what, what you're talking about is done with regulated utilities?
Yeah.
So the Public Utilities Commission might say, you're going to set up three or four restricted accounts. Chemicals, infrastructure, debt service, and some utilities they make whole-dollar funds. So in other words, 1/12 of your annual amount has to go into that restricted fund. Other utilities they, you take fund depending on how they collect the revenue. I think what I hear Pam say is that some money is going to be put into an infrastructure fund that will be segregated for that purpose.
Yes, we have that listed in our financial plan as a certain amount going into the infrastructure fund every year. And that we're handling it as a restricted fund.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that, that's two amount of money going in, would that be generated from rate increases?
Some of it will, yes.
As long as that's spelled correctly. Because I hate to be walking down the street and someone say to me, "All right, you have a public hearing. We've got, we've got problems and whatever you've done. I said, well, we've given you, you know, you've had rate increases four, five years in a row. How much money of that is going toward your main problem? Do we have an answer for that? I mean, that's all.
Sure.
And I think it's, I think we should...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, may, just for our own discussion here, I kind of take a little offense at the term neglected. I don't believe it was neglected. Water Authority had their hands pretty much tied for many years because of the large cost of the pipeline and the purchase of the pipeline. And the people didn't want to hear about any more rate increases. And, and it was evident when you even discussed a little bit of it here in the meeting. So the Water Authority was pretty much at their hands tied. I just don't like the term neglected. It makes it sound like you said, then these plans, they were plans, proposals to replace a lot of lines, but we just didn't have the money.
Well, we did have the money and we were hesitant on, and we listened to, we listened to the rate payers. And maybe we voted with hearts instead of our minds, but you know, we didn't, and I'll speak for myself. I, there were times where I didn't vote for a substantial increase because I listened to the big players saying, "You guys have beaten us to death." So instead of, instead of putting the money upfront to address the needs, I stepped back and voted with my heart instead of my head. And I don't regret it, but we're paying a pipe enough to not do that.
It wasn't done, but it wasn't...
No, it wasn't done maliciously or anything like that, but it is what it is.
So this year, just as, just to go through some of the projects we did, as everyone knows, we did the big project on Medicon. Actually had a pretty good result from that. We significantly increased fire close. So first step in expanding the high-pressure zone. We did get our emergency underconnection installed with East Providence with their 16-inch main. So it gives us at least another 2 million gallons a day backup. We extended the water main to schoolhouse. It gives us to Swansea Water, gives us another million gallons a day. So those were our, our major projects this year. And we did upgrade our customer service work order system, which was a lot of work and greatly improved the system.
On the Swansea project, does anything else have to be done or completed before it's ready to go?
It's all set. We're doing what's called a hydrant-to-hydrant connection. A piece of pipe between the two hydrants with a flow and a meter and a backflow preventer. We're still working on obtaining all of the okay's by various agencies, but as an emergency connection, it's, it's a standalone.
On the emergency okay's, is there a timeline on that?
I know the D E M's been going, but not the D E M. But the D E P in Massachusetts has been going back and forth on it for a number of months. Water Resource Board is going to be on their agenda next month. It was on the agenda last month. But they don't see any issues with it. And the Health Department only had issues on their water quality, especially the lead. And they need all of the water quality standards as well.
Pam?
Thank you.
Sorry. Did you throw, I just had a question. Is that hydrant on Child Street or is it on School House Road?
Schoolhouse Road.
Is it, is it installed already or is it...
It's installed, yes.
Is that a permitting condition?
No, it's a, it's just a hydrant. We have our hydrant that goes to the end of the town line. And Swansea has a hydrant at the end of their town line.
So there would be a flexible connection as needed?
As needed.
So you don't have to go out and test them?
We would, we're actually in the process of buying the piping and the connection, so they're all set, ready to go. Swansea has a pump. If it's needed, we would provide a backflow preventer and meter. So it could be set up essentially within an hour.
So that 3 million gallons a day in a real emergency that we can get our hands on?
Two.
Three.
Two from East Providence.
We had two from East Providence and one from there. Or we still have our treatment plant, which can produce water in here.
But you're waiting to hear from Massachusetts and what's the timeline for that?
They've been going back and forth for a while, but in an emergency situation...
What are they going to do for them?
They have other full-time systems like with Pawtucket that have full connections. They're looking at a lot of issues dealing with what is the water quality situation? Will be the flow rates, the pressures and so on. Trans, inter-basin transfer, interstate transfers. In an emergency, that really doesn't...
I don't see if they're making it much more complicated than it used to be. We're getting water from them. We're not putting water into them.
Oh, it's being set up as we could do it the other way too. If they had an emergency, we could actually supply them as well.
Right, but we don't really care about how long it takes for their approval to take our water. All we care about is approval for us to take their water.
Yes.
And it seems if you bifurcated them, maybe you could cut through some of the us.
Well, as far as Swansea's concerned, it's, they don't have any issue.
The state has issues.
It's the state.
But my question really is, it sounds as if their issues all revolve around our water going into Massachusetts, not Massachusetts water coming to us.
They had some concerns about Massachusetts feeding us if there was a drought. And they said, "Well, we wouldn't need their water in a drought. We're looking strictly at an emergency situation where there's no supply." So they were coming up with a lot of issues that we weren't really sort of using the water.
How do we answer that?
That's something they have to deal with on their side. Uh, just to show you this, pictures help a lot. 24-inch is a pretty good-sized pipe. And we had a very tight space to make that underconnection. And we actually ran into a number of issues because of that. And that's replacing our 8-inch with a 12-inch water main on Medicon. And this is just as an example of all the things we have to get across and under as well. So when you're digging, you've got a lot of other utilities crossing in the way.
When you finish the project, do you have a ribbon cutting?
Now we just chucked up and down a lot.
So anything that happens on the ground, we don't get a ribbon cut.
Pam, can I, excuse me, can I ask a question about the Medicon out of the project since it is completed?
Yes.
Have there been any complaints on other areas in Bristol where they have lost water pressure since that project has been completed?
No, no. We had one customer that thought they were, but we had tests before and after and they were the same.
I haven't ever been to that.
We actually expanded the area and put a couple more streets.
I have to admit, I've heard from my son and he, he lives on Narrow Road. And he has one of those booster pumps at his house. And since the project's been done, he finds it has been running more frequently than it used to. And he's, he lives alone, so you know, there's nobody else that uses the water. So that, the reason I asked, I was wondering if anyone else had complained about, he hasn't complained other than to me. He thought it seemed to have been running, pump's been running more than it used to. So I was just curious if there's anybody else...
I think we're having to check it again.
Well, I told him to, you know, I told him to call and complain.
Yeah, definitely, we'll check it out.
You know, get it done.
Top and Harrow's, what about? Top and Harrow's, where about?
Near Wendy's, about two houses near Wendy's. So it's close to Medicon Avenue. Anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other projects we're in the middle of, now we have a pump station upgrades. Our generators are due next week. Design for the Medicon pump station, again, the next step to increasing that high-pressure zone is to build a new pump station with larger pumps. We're going to utilize the old pump station as a chemical treatment station, so it will still be useful. We're still working on removing the upper Kikamewit dam, although we are going to have to do the clearance of the brush. So the D E M is still insisting on getting a final inspection on that, even though it's not specifically the dam. And of course, our new meter system. Designs we completed this last year, 24-inch emergency connection from Pawtucket to East Providence is almost complete. There are some changes because East Providence changed some of the locations of their water mains. So we're working on that. And actually, because of some of the problems we ran into with the 16-inch, we want to do more aggressive inspection on where that 24-inch is actually going to run so we know if there's going to be any problems beforehand. And the main replacement on water in Main Street has been bid. We've bid that in two phases. The second phase is, will go if National Grid replaces their gas main. Otherwise, the middle section will not be done.
Pam, what kind of a timeframe are they talking about for that? All that work on Water Street, between the sewer, the gas and the water?
They want to get it done this year.
All at the same time?
All in phases. We are going to start first. We want to start by the end of March on Main Street, then move to the southern end of Water Street, at which point the gas company is supposed to come in and do the middle section of Water Street. And then the sewer will be done following. They're, they're actually looking to do theirs late fall, early winter.
How much are we going to have on Water Street?
We're going to run Main Street all the way down to, what street is it?
St., uh, School Street.
School Street.
School Street.
Where our 24-inch comes across from Barrington.
So away.
It's going to be a good part of it. And the sewer main is, is going to go past that obviously to the solar plant.
But they, what are they talking about, a year for this project?
Oh, yeah. And then they want to do the streetscape after that.
Oh, that's something completely different.
Well, they're all kind of making it, trying to get us all to work together. So we try and get it all done.
Well, you don't really know what schedules are, but there'll be times that the whole street will be, not the whole street.
No, no, no.
Cars will be shut right down.
And they're trying to do it so it's in blocks. And their, while the traffic management plans are, they're pretty aggressive on that. Make sure everyone still has access. But, and that's how we're trying to time the schedules.
I'm being stingy because I'm looking how long it's been taking them to do Campbell Street.
Yeah. The problem is they're trying to avoid going into a two-year program. So we're all trying to work on very tight schedules to get this done.
The other rebuilding of Medicon's, I can go at the same time too? So all of it's going to be...
No, no, Medicon, we're not working in, on Medicon yet this year.
I thought the state was.
Yeah, between, between Chestnut Street and Bayou, they're going to put a temporary 30 lane in the middle. You know, like when you go over the bridge or what's it, just to try it out, see if it works.
So it's going to be very difficult to go in those zones.
Yeah.
Pam, back to the Water Street project. Is National Grid still walking and taking that old line out, that gas line?
They have said now that they will remove the, actually, they're going to replace the gas main in another section. And they will abandon the old gas main, but that we're still going to be responsible for removing the old gas main.
Have they agreed, have they agreed to that or...
They have, in verbally, but we haven't gotten anything in writing. And we're expecting them, they probably to start in May with that middle section.
It's not going to be easy job, it's a lot of...
Oh, it's going to be a lot of work. And I just want to mention, we did a lot of design in-house and our engineering department's doing an excellent job.
I think you're going to do a lot on the job.
So we've been saving some money there. But again, back to what we're spending money on in this rate increase are our projects. Money for our reserves going forward as we were talking about this infrastructure reserve and because we have still experiencing reduced sales. So projects for this year, we're replacing mains in Warren, doing the mains, the Water Street project. We're cleaning and lining. These have been on our list since I first came. Couple of mains in Bristol that are in very poor condition. We are doing those this year. And then we're looking at some structural lining for problem areas in Child Street and County Road in Barrington. And of course, looking at our, constructing our new pump station. Other projects other than construction is, we've been talking about is our new customer service payment portal. We're updating our hydraulic model and getting it to work with our G I S, new meter system and of course, the Pawtucket pipeline project. And this is mainly working with East Providence and our legislators to hopefully get this moving forward, at least get it on their agendas. Because we're still responsible for the infrastructure in Massachusetts. This was the Anawan Dam that we just repaired. And looking at maybe having to do work on Swansea Dam in the future and wanting to try to get out from under Massachusetts infrastructure.
Let me ask a question about the Anawan Dam, if I can. That's the one where the surrounding development of houses has polluted the reservoir?
Swansea, yeah.
That's the Swansea Dam, okay.
Anawan is one we need to discuss is the fact that now we've done the repairs, we can actually sever the contract with Anawan with a one-year notice. And once we, you know, looking at revising our Bristol County Water Act, it might be a good time to take a look at that and moving forward.
It seems to me it would be a good time to accomplish that and just look at it.
And this is, we're speaking about our, this is our infrastructure plans, the amount of money we would be spending... we would be spending each year and for the next ten years. The brown here is on the distribution system. This is mostly the pipe work. The gray is the water supply. And it's our, another, our top project is managing a backup supply. And that's what these funds are for. The rest are for facilities, which are, you know, building the pump station and, um, and doing some work on our building as well. So, and then eventually decommissioning our old water treatment plant and the facility that we have the old water treatment plant in, um, it's over at Barrington. So this is kind of how we've structured our spending for the next few years. And this is how we're going to pay for it. These are our existing bonds, which are decreasing rather rapidly. This is our bond that we did from T U Bank, which we are almost finished with, with our projects from the last two, three years. These are new bonds that we are looking to take out in the future to do some of this infrastructure work. And the purple here is our contribution to the I F R fund, the Restricted Infrastructure Fund. And these funds are going to be used, somewhat here in the blue, to balance out some of our bond funds. And will actually be used more in the future. So we'd like to stay around this five million dollar max for funding as we go further out to keep our rate increases relatively low. And we do that by putting money into this restricted fund. And that we would start reducing the amount of bonds that we would take out in the future. Spending, we would try to balance our cash payments with our bond means. But, and another issue with our rate increases and has been, is that a good portion of our rate increases do go to decreased income due to loss of revenue because conservation or whatever there is less consumption in the system. And our costs are still pretty much fixed. Our costs don't go down when people use less water, they actually go up. Less water means more attention in the distribution system. We have to keep the water moving. It's, um, to maintain water quality, we have to do more flushing if the water stays in the pipes for longer periods of time. And it takes a lot more attention.
If I may, Jim, the, the lack of water use, is that, is that just ours or is that across the state?
That's, that's across the country, a whole bunch. Unless we're in a heavy growth area, all water systems, I've seen this. And it's due a lot, in fact, to, well, with loss of industry, for one thing. Industry used to use a lot of water and paid a good percentage of the water bills. Bristol and Barrington and Warren are essentially lost most of their larger industrial customers. The conservation in the form of low-flow toilets, low-flow appliances, as those have come more and more into the market, have really made a difference. It made a major impact.
And I can see, yeah, I never thought, now that you mentioned last, you know, the loss of industry.
Big one.
Must be a big hit on water.
We had big ones.
Definitely.
We had some good size water, well, a lot of seafood and.
And they're no longer in our top ten.
No, no.
The top ten now are the colleges, the nursing homes.
Well, shouldn't at some point in time, that level off?
Well, we're starting to see a little bit here.
We've lost so much already.
Uh, this year, actually, we were pretty much running even with, with last fiscal year. The major problem is though, our spring and fall were lower than normal and our summer was higher than normal because it was a long, dry summer. And the climate was relatively mild, so people were still watering lawns and so on. Some years it gets really hot and people just stop using water. This year, they used water pretty much all throughout the summer, so we had a really good peak summer. But our spring and fall have actually dropped lower than normal. So we're expecting next year, if we have an average summer, we will be back on this downward trend once again.
Yeah, we're over, I'd say, the next five or ten years. You're not going to see a drastic drop like that, I shouldn't.
I think we're, like you said, in this, in this last few years, we're starting to see a little more leveling off. But we're still, we're still looking to go lower next year.
It's going to be pretty much the same base when I'm going to have big, big customers going.
No, we're.
You shouldn't, unless the college packs something, then we're in trouble.
We're going to pretty much, you know, get pretty constant. And actually, we've figured that into our financial plan for the next ten years. We've pretty much leveling off our losses as, as we go forward. And that's it.
Pam, I think that's an excellent overview. Um, I'd love to get an electronic copy of that and I think we ought to put it in a P D F and make it available on our website and send it to the town councils.
Sure.
Does everybody else agree?
Sure, I agree, yeah.
The only quibble I would have is in the bar chart that showed where the money was coming from. The colors were so close together, it's hard to see what the legend is. So if you think about changing the color scheme of the slides to make that a little more understandable. I think the more communication like that we do, the better. And you might want to send it to the legislators too.
I was a little, you know, I, I was a little confused, which doesn't take too much, it confuses me these days, but, it appears from your presentation, which is excellent, that it's a combination of a rate increase plus, what else to generate the funds that we need. And it's not, I mean, if you raise it three and a half, three point five, you can get four hundred and twenty-five thousand? Four twenty, four twenty. But that's not enough to address everything that's on the table. So the rest of the money comes from borrowing.
It's from borrowing, from bonds.
Because I think that's, and I mention that because I think it's important, if we, if we put this package together and send it out, and it's all encompassing as far as what we, what we plan to do. There's a bottom line on figures, but those figures don't, you know, they don't equate to the, to the rate increase. I, I, so I, I just think there should be a paragraph that's saying that even though the rate, the rate increase that we're asking for, four hundred and fifty thousand goes for this, this and this. And the rest of the money, which we need a whole bunch of, comes from this, this and this. Not just, you know, not, because it appears, it's all right, first blush, then we'll say, oh, the rate increase is for everything we want to do. And that's, that's the first.
No, exactly, you're right, it's to fund the debt service and the bonds, it's to fund our reserves.
Something in there to explain exactly what the three point five does for us within the next year.
I think you're right, because on that first slide, it talks about the three and a half percent. You could refer to slide number X where we show our projected debt service over the next five years. And part of this rate increase services the debt that exists today prospectively.
So somewhere, just a little explanation, I think, just put clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience have any comment?
How many rate increases have we had in the past?
I'm sorry, and.
How many rate increases have we had in the last couple of years?
I think we've had a rate increase for the last four years.
Yes, there are a year. So it's fair to say that this three point five isn't going to stop there. That next year, we're going to come back to the team and we'll ask for another rate increase and the year after that, and the year after that, because we have a large amount of money that we're asking for.
It's a very aggressive, it's a very aggressive capital project adhesion, huh? I don't know if we have a handout to give the, the employee there.
Well, I mean, I, I.
I'm sorry, sorry.
I watched it, you know, and I mean.
But I can tell you, I can tell you from personal experience, and I mentioned it earlier, that there was a time when I was on the board that we didn't do rate increases. Because we said, well, you know, let's, let's worry about the end, worry about the end. And by doing that, you know, the system just kept on sinking and sinking and sinking. Now we're hitting the bottom, unfortunately. But like I said, at that time, I voted with my heart instead of my brain and, uh, you know.
True, but you're asking the customer to pick up the rate increase every year. You know, the, the town's asking us to pick up the car taxes and, and the house, it's not enough taxes, so let's increase the house taxes and it's never enough. So, I mean, why wouldn't I just pay a lump sum and get it welded?
Do that, yeah.
Right, I mean, and I still can't drink my water. I still have to buy water, I can't drink it.
Why can't you drink?
Because it tastes awful.
What is it?
I, I live over here on Warren. Can't drink it.
We don't get those complaints anymore since we've been using Providence water.
If I can make a suggestion, maybe, uh, if you can name an address, there were, Ken and take a visit up there and see what the problem is.
It might be your own supply line, because we really have not had that.
I, I gotta tell you, my mother-in-law lives in Bristol, she can't drink her water either. So, I mean, the complaints are really there. If you do a survey out to your customers, I guarantee you, you'll have more than a couple saying that. There's a reason why the bottled water industry is up.
I'm just saying, it is unusual, so please, we'll check it out. Anyone that has a complaint, we'll check out what the situation is. But we do provide Providence water, which is the best, just about the best in the country.
Well, I've heard that, I've heard that years ago, that, you know, well, it's, we're going to get Providence water, but it was mixed in with situant, correct?
It is situant.
It is situant.
Yeah.
It's one and the same.
One and the same, the same as Providence is.
I'm just telling you that you can't drink the water, there's a taste to it. I'm not the only one, my neighbor said the same thing over in Providence, uh, you know, over in Bristol, my mother-in-law says the same thing. So, I mean, we just kind of chalked it up to, oh, well, you can't drink the water.
Well, it's, it's, it could be the chlorine in the water, which we have to maintain by law. And the best way to deal with that is to put it in your refrigerator or put it through a carbon filter. But the chlorine is, um, is there for a reason and protects the quality of the water.
But when you're asking people to constantly, another rate increase, it's a share, it's washed, it's.
The water, that's a matter of taste, because the water's not harmful to you. Water's not harmful, it's, it's a matter of taste. And when you, when you analyze, to look at it, I know, I, you hear people say, oh, another rate increase. It's twenty dollars a year.
This year. Last year.
It's twenty dollars a year, I bet your cell phone goes up more than that.
No.
What I, I would suggest that you as a rate payer and anyone else who has a problem with the taste of the water, if you, if you have an outlet, it's the staff, the employees here, you, you should contact them, have someone come out and maybe there's something in the line somewhere that needs to be addressed. Maybe it is a taste issue. You know, whatever the reason is, ignoring it isn't going to help your situation. Not having a rate increase is not going to help your situation. So I'm, I'm suggesting that anyone who is a rate payer, who does not like the taste of their water that's being provided to them, this is the, this is the place to come. And have your name, your address, and someone can come out at a certain time and find out exactly what it is you're tasting and what's causing it. Yes, sir.
Not relating to your point directly, but, um, the three and a half percent, for those who don't know, was voted on in the finance committee. Management had recommended a three point oh percent increase. Gina wanted a four point oh, I wanted a three point oh. Ray decided to compromise at three and a half, and that's what we voted to accept.
Hold on one second, sir.
Are we getting away from the public hearing here?
No.
No, no? He's making a clarification. Okay.
I'm talking about the three and a half percent.
Okay.
Having said that, um, and I beg your indulgence, Jim, but I'm going to talk for about two to three minutes. I won't be able to vote for three and a half, and I will tell you why. I don't know if you guys remember when I got first put on the board by Barrington Town Council. Barrington Town Council generally isn't too fond of me. And I was sent here as a punishment to you. And if you remember Bill DeWitt's line of, everyone we send there seems to get Stockholm syndrome. I don't know if you all remember that line, but.
I do.
Never had it used on me before. What their concern was, and it was a real concern, was there had just been an eleven percent increase. And B C W A had announced that there was going to be four percent increases every year ongoing. This was a huge, huge problem for our town council. Because they don't like automatic increases. They sent me here specifically on this issue because I had a history of identifying in the school department of Barrington where they were taking money. The school department of Barrington would have a budget of about thirty million dollars and every year they would have a three million dollar surplus and every year they would ask for a raise and come back with a two to three million dollar surplus. That's not going on here, all right? I can tell you as perhaps one of the biggest cynical critics in the world, that kind of thing isn't going on here. But the management, which has done an outstanding job, in my opinion, who represented a three percent increase, because this year, as they pointed out, there is no increase in operation due to write-offs, one-time expenses. And three percent, they felt and presented so, was enough to pay for the improvements that we needed. It is always nice to have extra money. And that is a viable way to look at it. We get more money, we can use it. My town council very strongly did not want that to happen. Isn't a lot of money? No, it's nothing, it, it, it's almost nothing. It's politics and principle. And I, from where I sit, I can't vote for an increase to have extra money. I, I just am not made that way. If you're going to have an increase, it needs to be for a purpose. And the purpose as defined by management was everything that management stated. And they felt that this year, next year maybe more, but because of the hot summer and the increased usage, it was going to be a year, and other savings that Mark has identified, it was going to be a year that three percent was doable and to still accomplish the goals that were set up. It is perfectly viable to ask for extra money that you're going to use for the right purpose. Mark is very good at his job and Mark should take that as a compliment, because I do not say that about every management person I've worked with. He has carefully budgeted in small amounts that unless a major unforeseen happens, we will be at budget or have a small surplus in individual items. Those small surpluses give them the flexibility to handle all but the most extreme problems, which nothing can be prepared for. It's a well-run company, they said they needed three percent. My board feels strongly that we don't, we should not give more, to the point where I was accused of falling into the spell of Stockholm syndrome. I have to honor management's request and believe that three percent was sufficient. If you want to go with three and a half or four, it is viable, it is acceptable. It is not outside of the realm of what can be done. I can't vote for it, thank you. Yes, gentlemen?
Under the term, what, what people are, is that Pam and the people in operations here? When you say management and.
Obviously, the operations here, yeah.
So like Pam and.
Pam and Mark, I deal with the financial side.
So the organization recommended the three percent?
Yes.
The operating P?
Yes.
Excuse me.
We should have this, you know, should we? This discussion should take place in the meeting.
That's, that's what I was getting at.
I thought we were ruling on the three and a half.
No.
We have a convenient meeting.
My bad. Any other comments?
I just don't want to pay a three point five percent, I don't want to pay three percent. I mean, we've paid it every year, I think twenty dollars isn't a lot of money, but it's twenty dollars on top of the twenty from last year, I know twenty for next year. It's just an ongoing cycle, twenty dollars here, twenty dollars for the car taxes, another two hundred.
The alternative, the alternative to not doing the maintenance is to have the pipes equipped mission.
I understand.
So I don't want to do it either, but I don't want to have.
Because I don't think you do have that, because I don't think you do have that. If your water stopped coming, even if you don't like the taste, because you couldn't shower, you couldn't bathe, you couldn't do your wash. We have pipes that are a hundred years old, you have to spend money.
I, I do understand that. Please don't tell me that I don't understand that, but there's, you know, like he said, we've neglected it for so many years and so this generation right now, we're getting whacked with everything. We've neglected everything apparently, and so we're getting whacked with everything. I mean. I mean, there's got to be a balance here, and like he said, if you can go another year without a rate increase, then let's do it.
Well, trust me, you would not be happy. I told you that the rate increase was going to be 8, 9, or 11% the following year, which is what happened seven years ago.
See, I, I, I have one directly of the same opinion. Let's wait the next year, and let's wait the next year, and they want 3, again, 1.5. And then it's 2017, and the system is halfway in the tunnel. And if you want to get mad at me, get mad at me, sir.
I don't want to get mad at anybody, I just see it in my, my opinion.
No.
That's fine, your opinion is fine.
Sure. We value that.
Anything else? Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second? All of them famous, in time for raising your hand? Okay.